Good evening, everybody. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office. The petitioner or petitioner's representative will come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and present the subject application to the board. Although we have it in front of us, we would like to hear it from you. What do you want? What are you doing? What are you building? What are the reasons? The chair, which is me, may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. This is what that means. That means when it's your turn, you come up to the podium, press the button until you see the red light, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us why you're here. And then we will ask some questions. And then if there's anybody in the audience, neighbors, that would like to speak in favor of what you're building, they will come up and speak. If they, if you have neighbors in opposition, they will come up and speak. We might have a few more questions. If there are people in opposition that have spoken about your, whatever you want to do, you can then come back up, or your lawyer or your builder, and discuss that. You're here for dimensional relief. So you're not here to tell us, and I don't mean this to be rude, but we're not, you're not here to tell us that you're a lifelong resident of Peabody and how much you love Peabody, because we all do. We're not here for barking dog stories or the trees, leaves fall in your pool. We're here, why, what, what do you want to build? Why do you want to build it? And there we go. After that, we take a vote. And I say this every time, and it is the absolute truth. This is probably one of the fairest zoning boards around, but not everything can be approved. Because if everything was approved, we wouldn't be needed. So we either will approve it or not, and Carla, our wonderful clerk, will get in touch with you the next day and explain the waiting period. If you're approved, there's a 20-day waiting period. And that's basically how it goes. So after we vote, the decision will be typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you're at the microphone, please speak clearly and only speak, and only speak when you are at the podium. So I'm just going to say this for anybody else that's listening. Sometimes we have a full house, and somebody that has spoken, who has sat down, they don't like what they're hearing, and they'll talk from their seat. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak as many times as you want, just don't speak from your seat. And that's pretty simple. And I believe that's it. If you have any questions after tonight, you can always call the building department. And we are now ready with number one after we accept the correspondence.
So I'm going to start the meeting by making a motion to accept the January 2, 2024 Zalota's correspondence about resignation from the zoning board. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We already did it. All done. Number one?
Yeah, we have four.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank God, thank God for Carla. I don't know what I'd do without her. So just as a point of reference, there are four board members tonight, because we are down one. So that means for something to be approved, you need four yes votes. One no vote, and it doesn't, it doesn't pass. So bearing that in mind, if you would like to continue this till our next meeting in February, there will be five members here next February, uh, next month. I'm not saying that you have to worry about it, but I have to tell you that you might have to worry about it. So that's your decision. Number one.
Number one on tonight's agenda is the application of Michael Stone and Amanda McFarlane, care of Richard Bocelli, for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 30 Patricia Road in Peabody. Petitioner seeks a variance to build an attached garage and requires relief from right side yard where 20 feet is required and 5.5 feet is proposed. This property is located in an R1 zoning district.
And...
Richard Bocelli, 61 High Street, Danvers, Mass., architect. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Richard Bocelli, architect. I was engaged by Amanda and Michael Stone of 30 Patricia Road to evaluate opportunities and limitations to expand their home to meet their current and future needs. The applicant loves their neighborhood and community and has limited opportunity to expand this home to meet their needs of wanting to grow their immediate family, entertain, extend family and friends for the holidays, and offer out-of-town and out-of-state family a place to stay while in town. The addition will allow the applicant to have their vehicles garaged along with summer and winter storage, and expand and renovate their living spaces from spa rooms to larger, more comfortable rooms and spaces. The size, shape, and topography of the land and location of the existing dwelling in relation to the requirements of 7.2 Schedule of Dimensional Controls offer a limited opportunity to expand the property and presents a substantial hardship. We believe the desirable relief does not substantially detriment the public good and does not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinances. Additionally, you will find that Amanda and Michael met with a butters, including the direct abutter to the addition number 32, to convey the direction and received letters of support from both. What I, what I've shown here is in the solid pink line is the irregular lot shape. The dashed pink line are the setbacks. The blue solid line is the existing dwelling, and the green dashed line is the proposed addition. The top right image, you can see the topography of the land and the challenges with that. Both images, you can see that. And on the bottom right, you can see in the solid black is the addition. The lower plan would be the garage level for their vehicles and winter and summer storage, and the upper level would be an addition of living space to expand for a primary parents' suite as well.
You can't hear if you're talking. Sorry. If you want to, you know, you can take it out. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
So as I was saying, on the bottom right, the diagram depicts in, be the black outline on the right side would be the lower level garage addition with summer and winter storage, and above would be the addition for expanded living space.
Did you say expanded living space for the parents?
So it, it's going to end up being an additional bedroom. All the spaces will expand. We've, we've discussed expanding the kitchen, taking the first bedroom, the smallest one in the center, and converting that into a dining room. We'll need access through, so we'll take the two closets and turn that into a hall. So we'll, we'll be taking away a bedroom and adding two more bedrooms. The goal is for a parents' bedroom, children's bedrooms, and guest bedroom.
Just bedrooms?
Excuse me?
Just bedrooms.
Correct. The family currently has one child at 28 months. Their future is to be determined. It's in God's hands, so that, what that is going to look like right now, we're not certain. But two weeks from now, two months from now, we may have some certainty.
Through the chair, so those are going to be extra bedrooms, but it's all going to be one dwelling? It's not going to be a separate dwelling?
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So, uh, is the homeowner conducting business in this house?
No.
Through the chair if I could. I understand the topography, because actually my house has the same situation. Do you know how many feet between the front part of the addition to the landline as opposed to the, would that, would that have required an ordinance also, or is it just because of the topography? The rear corner where it's closest to the land is where you require the variance?
The front does as well. If you, if you see the pink dashed line?
Yeah.
How it cuts through the green dashed line? The portion to the bottom of the drawing is beyond the setback. But it is less on the front.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And you've talked to the residents at 32, Mr., is it council?
We have letters of support from 32 Patricia and 27 Patricia. 27 is across the street.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to read an email into the record. It's from the neighbor on 31 Patricia Road, Ryan DeCarlo. It was sent on January 9, 2024, and it was sent to Carla McGrath. It says, "Good morning. My name is Ryan DeCarlo, and I am from 31 Patricia Road. We received the zoning board of appeals letter yesterday for 30 Patricia Road. Neither Rhonda DeCarlo or I have any issue with the proposed variance required. I look forward to seeing their garage addition on their well-kept home. Thank you, Ryan DeCarlo."
Are there any neighbors in the audience to speak in favor?
None in favor, sorry.
In opposition?
So my name's David Carson. I own 32 Patricia Road. I've never talked to these people. There are tenants that live in my house. I don't know if they've spoken to them, but I didn't talk to them or provide them any...
32...
I am the house that this would be five and a half feet from my property line. So obviously, I don't want to, I don't know these people personally. It's not a personal thing or anything like that, but I just think that it can be expanded someplace besides having a garage and a two-story thing five and a half feet from my property line. I've owned this house for 18 years. I used to live there. I moved, because I had kids, I moved to a bigger house, and I plan on moving back here when I retire in a few years. I do not want to walk out in my yard and have a garage in a two-story building five and a half feet from my property line. I honestly think that they could do something either on the left side, or if they held it and put something in the back. I'm not opposed to them improving their property or making it more livable for them. I am opposed to it being five and a half feet from my property line.
Well, yeah, that is a concern of mine also. I was wondering, Mr. Gomezakiama Bocelli?
Yes.
Um, was there any talk about reducing the garage even by five feet?
We looked at a number of options, and this addition is very tight for a two-car garage. It works for two cars. If it gets reduced anymore, two cars does not work. And can I acknowledge?
But you have to talk to the...
I'm sorry that this gentleman is here right now. This is a little bit of news to me. I have a letter that the owner shared with me from, it sounds like, the inhabitants of 32, and it sounds like they did not have a conversation with them, but we do have a letter from them.
So correct me if I'm wrong here, Carla or you. I'm glad you have it. I want to know why we don't have it.
It's in the package. There are two letters of support in the package.
We have, we have one from 31 Patricia. That's all we have. And unfortunately, we can't accept that tonight. You can give it to Carla, but we can't accept it tonight because that's late correspondence.
It was part of the application package.
I don't have it, but I could check online to see if it was uploaded. But it's also from the rent. Is this, is this 32?
So there's one for 32 and one for 27.
We'll give Carla a minute to check. Is there anybody else in the audience to speak in favor or opposition?
Can you answer the question why the addition just can't be...
Well, well, you come up to the podium.
Could you just answer why the addition can't be put on the left or on the back? Why, why does it have to be put, or on the top? I mean, I, I'm not opposed to them improving their house. I, I could, you know, whatever makes them happy. I just don't want it encroached on my property line. If they want to put a second floor on, if they, I just want to know why it has to be put on that side up against my property.
Okay, do you want to answer that?
Sure.
Has that even been discussed?
For, for a number of reasons. This is the ideal location. As I described, the topography, the shape of the lot, there's, there's less space on that side to work with. We're dealing with a higher elevation, so we would have to excavate the entire front yard to do that, to put it out back. Similarly, we would have to excavate a significant amount of land as well as hardscape and landscape. This is the ideal location for it. And I'm speaking with the owner right now via text, and they conveyed to me that they sent letters to the owner of 32 and never got a response. So they went to the neighbor, knocked on the door, and spoke to who was there.
Okay, and Carla can assure you that it was not part of the package. It was not uplifted. So we can't accept that this evening.
Okay.
And you can't read it this evening, and...
Even though it was submitted with the application?
It was not submitted with the application because it, it didn't upload. So you might think it is, but Carla would have it on...
Through the chair. The application is submitted online. The only way that these could have been submitted is if they were added as attachments to the online process, and they were not.
They were.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't know what they were attached to, but I don't have them.
Okay.
I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
We have second. We have second. Close the public hearing. Second? No, no. Before I do.
Okay.
Well, we can talk, yeah.
We're drawing our post, uh, putting it off to the next meeting for you, give you an opportunity to try to work something out with Mr. Carson.
Of course.
That's probably a smart thing to do.
I mean, since you, you did talk, you did take the effort to talk to the owner, or you thought was the owner, then to find out tonight by surprise that it wasn't, I think maybe to give you the opportunity to talk to him, maybe something can be worked out. Might be the way to go with this one.
Sure.
Because, and I'm not speaking for the whole board, but at the end of the day, you need 20 feet, and you're only going to have five and a half feet, which is a little taller than me. And, you know, you're here, I know you're here for a variance, you're here for dimensional relief. You've put together a great package, but the zoning laws are the zoning laws, and hopefully you can figure something out.
And through the chair, I, some of the things that we deal with here would also be privacy and the enjoyment of the neighbors. And if someone is going to object to a structure being built that close to their land with something that's tantamount to a second floor that would overlook their property that close to the property line, that is something that we would take into consideration as well.
Yeah, and of course, a response to that from an architectural point of view would be to not put windows on that side of the facade to help with that.
And that's very helpful, but at the end of the day, the entire structure is still just five and a half feet. So could you ask us, tell us that you want to continue till next meeting?
I would like to continue the case.
Motion to close public hearing?
No.
No?
No. Motion to continue to the next meeting.
Yep, we have to keep it open till next meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay. My bad. Sorry, we're continuing. Yeah, motion to continue. Till next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you February 12? Let's just put that down for the record. February 12th. We'll see you February 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'd like to submit these?
Should I do that now, or?
Yeah, I can take them and submit them. And I will upload them for you, but you will see on here that they were not uploaded when you check it and get back to the office.
Thank you.
Number two.
Number two on tonight's agenda is the application of Siegfriedo Peraza for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 30 Nickerson Road in Peabody, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance to build an addition to rear of home and requires relief from right side where 15 feet is required and 7 feet is proposed, left side where 15 feet is required and 14.5 feet are proposed, rear yard where 35 feet is required and 31 feet is proposed. The property is located in an R1A zoning district.
Sir?
Thank you very much. Siegfriedo Peraza, 30 Nickerson Road. So the reason I want to build an addition is I have lived in this house, or my wife and I have lived in this house for a little over 10 years. Our house is very small. It's only 745 square feet. And especially our kitchen is very tiny, so we want to build a bigger kitchen as well as an extra bedroom, so that way we can have a kitchen, a living room, dining room, two bedrooms, and a spare room. And obviously, the setbacks are not enough, so that's why we're seeking for a variance.
Not too bad, though.
The neighborhood...
Questions? Concerns? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? Oh. Yep, you want to come up, sir? Sure. Say your name and address for the record.
William Cooney, number 28, Nickerson Road. I'm a neighbor on their side. On the, I believe I'm on the 14 and a half foot side.
Yep.
I approve it. I mean, it's just...
You're okay with it?
Yes, very much so.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to take a, a quick second and say that the best, you can come up, the best way to go about an addition is, or whatever, a deck, raising the roof, whatever it is, is to always speak with your neighbors. Because the worst thing is when they get the notice in the mail, they come here, and they have absolutely no idea what's going on.
Correct.
So I'm glad you spoke to him.
Yeah, I actually talked to all my neighbors, and all of the ones I talked to said, absolutely, go ahead with this.
All right, any other questions by the board? Then the matter is before the board.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Graham? Yes, you are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, she's going to change that. Number three.
Number three on tonight's agenda is the application of George Glynos, care of attorney, John Kelty, for a variance from provisions of zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 7.2 Dimensional Controls, Section 9.2 Parking, Section 9.3 Driveways, Section 10.7 Landscaping for parking areas. As it applies to the premise known as 28 Washington Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, petitioner seeks a variance to create three additional units where accessory structure was located, totaling seven units on the property, and requires relief from dimensional controls where 39,750 square feet is required and 14,045 square feet is proposed, rear yard where 35 feet is proposed and five, is, is proposed, is required, and five feet is proposed, side yard where 15 feet is required and four feet is proposed, parking where 18 spaces is required and 14 are proposed, landscaping for parking areas where none is proposed to allow relief from 9.3 driveway width where 20 feet is required and 14 feet is proposed. Property is located in an R4 zoning district.
Before you begin, Attorney Kelty, I just would like to state for the record, using a phrase that I have coined, this is asking for the sun, the moon, and the stars. It's all yours.
This matter, I would respectfully request be continued until the February 12 meeting. We need the opportunity to meet with our neighbors at the Sutton Home, which is behind us. I believe that Ed Scheres would like to make a statement, but I'd like not to open the public hearing until February 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We would like to hear. Now, remember, are you...
I'm not going to speak specifically to the issues that's in front of you.
But you can, but you can come back next month if you so desire to do that.
Yes, and I'm not sure if I have the ability personally to do it. I'm here to represent the Board of Trustees of the Sutton House, which is in the rear. And just as I asked Mr. Kelty for a continuance, so they can meet with, I just want to understand why we're looking for the continuance, so they can meet with the contractor and Mr. Kelty to go over some of the things I'm sure that you have major, might have issues with the relief that's requesting. And just so everyone knows is that they, they're looking to work with the developer, but they have some, some issues, but they could not be here tonight because they have a Board of Trustees meeting tonight. So just the understanding and respectful to the board, and Carla, there's that they would like to have been here tonight, but they did get a, they did have a board meeting, and they disrespectfully, you know, want to work out these issues.
And could either you or Ms. Malad relay to them that the next meeting will be February 12?
Yes, and, and this, if it can be continuous too, as long as the board can meet with the contractor and Mr. Kelty. I do not know their schedule. I'm sure they'll do everything they can, but if it comes up, I don't want the board here to say, well, you know, you knew you were coming back the 12th, you should have gotten that meeting, but sometimes it's difficult. So they may ask for a continuous again.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that is continued, and let's see. I don't believe we have anything else. We do?